Six o'clock, are you ready for this? We're good?
Right.
So it is six o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order if we could, please. Additions and deletions to the agenda. We do have one last minute amendment. Two, I'm sorry. We have two, yeah.
I sent out this one.
Okay.
Which changes these two, and then this is a third change. Changes a different part of the agenda.
Okay, so we have items E3 and 4, and then this one will be...
So this is what it looks like. Sorry, I'm sorry. We're changing the amount on this one in E2.
In E2, okay.
And we're changing the amount in E3, and we're deleting E4.
Okay, so we're deleting E4.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll figure that out.
Does that make sense?
As long as it makes sense to you, Greg.
It does, but I'm trying to consider us a lot better than that.
Sarah says.
Yes, Sarah.
So we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support. Last chance for questions or comments. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. The rule has been taken?
Yes.
The rule has been taken. All right. If Rome, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Now, we entertain a motion for the approval of the October 24, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support. We have motion and support. Are there any comments, questions, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving down to see hearings. We are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows for the purpose of determining whether to allow, whether to the following described premises shall be designated and established as a commercial rehabilitation district under PA 210 of 2005. And the location is 1207 East Superior Street, also known as parcel number 29-51-344-582-0. Your pleasure to hold a public hearing.
Move to hold the hearing.
Support.
Motion's support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we are in a hearing.
Nobody's here.
Well, you're here, Ryan.
Well, I'll provide some background for the project, and then Ryan Smith, the owner, can answer any questions if there's any from the commission or the public. The general description of the project is a reconstruction of the interior of 127 East Superior Street, using as many of the original architectural features as possible, demolition of some of the partitions, the restoration and replacement of exterior windows and doors, and the installation of modern HVAC plumbing and electrical systems. The scheduled time period for the projects to begin this month. You can't work on a project if you want to use this program until the district is established. That's what we're doing tonight. So as soon as they can do that, the contractors can begin work, and then the owner will be back to this board with an application for approval for the actual abatement itself. So that's all, it's pretty straightforward. The changes are those, the new plumbing electrical and HVAC system, the major appliances that need to be changed in there.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No.
Anything you want to add, Ryan?
No. That covers it all.
Okay. Sounds like a great project.
What's it gonna be? Just updating what's in there, or is it gonna be something else?
Office space.
There's office space.
Yeah, and so it's gonna be divided into two units, and the south unit will be office, and the north unit will be a, like a restaurant type.
Okay, good. Cool.
And I guess I should mention the project cost is just over $167,000. Estimated cost.
How old is that building?
Oh, it was built in like 1920s?
30s.
Cool.
Anybody else? May I raise a motion to close the public hearing? So are any members of the public? I guess we need to make sure, other than Ryan, I guess we're all Ryan.
I don't have any extra things.
Okay. So no members of the public, okay. Thank you, Roxy. Support. Motion and support. Last chance for everybody. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried. We've closed the public hearing. Now, we'd like to consider a resolution authorizing the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district for the property located at 1207 East Superior, which is also known as 29-51-344-582-0. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt. Support.
Motion's support. Last chance. Anything changed?
Nope, everything has changed.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we've adapted or adopted the district, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your investment. Ryan, I appreciate it.
Sent you the next paperwork for the next one, so just let me know when I need to come back. Okay?
You're welcome at every meeting. Just keep going.
I'm gonna go ahead and do it with my paper.
I was speaking, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Bye, guys.
Okay, item number two. We're to consider a resolution to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows. This will be to consider a finalization of special assessment district role number one for 2020 for the construction of sanitary sewer leads and special assessment district role number two of 2020, which is for the construction of sidewalks on Iowa Street. Your pleasure to set the hearing.
I'm just setting the hearing.
Motion's support. Comments or questions?
Just closing out this project. It's nice to do these quickly after we're done with the project, so. We're almost there.
This is 2023. We're working on 2020. Doesn't seem quick, but. In terms of these projects, I know it is timely, so.
Yep.
Anybody else? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried, and we have set a hearing. Number three. We are to consider a resolution to set another public hearing for Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider a finalization of special assessment district role number one for 2023 for the construction of sanitary sewer leads and special assessment district role number two of 2023 for the construction of sidewalks on Harvard Street.
Move to set the hearing.
Support.
Motion's support.
Same thing. Just trying to get these buttoned up and close up these projects.
Okay. Last chance. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion is carried, and we've set another hearing. Now, moving down to E1. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Rome Professional Services in the amount of $315,500 to support professional engineering services on the Pine Avenue Road and Utility Reconstruction Project. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support. Motion's support.
Again, this is a project we've been talking about for a very long time. We need to get to going on the engineering for this. We're working on right now the, well, the construction stuff for this year in the north, sewer main going just north of Washington Street. This is to get that going and underway. It's gonna be all the timing that needs to happen. We'll be talking about that a little bit in the newsletter with our SRF and the ARPA monies. Timing is of the essence, so this will get that whole process rolling on that project.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, and we've set a district there, or we've hired Rome, I guess, for the reconstruction. Okay, number two. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Baker Tilly US LLP in the amount of $20,500, but now it's been changed to $28,000, correct? Okay. For financial advisory services related to the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water supply system, which is in conjunction with the DWSRF loan, also to authorize the city manager to execute the related agreement. Your pleasure here. Motion's support. We don't have support, sorry? Support. Okay, that was support.
All right, so.
Update is.
Yes, this is why we had to make these amendments tonight to the agenda, and I'm sorry it was a little later. We just received this at 3:00. So I'd like to read to you the email that Dave received at 3:00, dealing with our SRF drinking water loans and grants. This is the, or, sorry, Eagle speaking. As we work with communities to finalize projects moving forward in the FY24, some communities have decided to defer to future years, thereby freeing up funds that were initially allocated to their projects. This allows us to offer funds to projects further down the list. Initially, the city of Alma was on the border and only able to be partially funded. However, with additional funds now available, we are able to increase the traditional loan funding amount to $8,420,309. This combined with the funding already allocated under the bill loan of $779,291, our ARPA grant for $9,220,400, the Bill LSRLR loan of $530,400, and the Bill SLSLR, and this is the principal forgiveness loan of $509,600. This allows Alma to be fully funded under the SRF program. So very good news from a standpoint of this is all being done underneath the 2% loan monies through the state of Michigan as opposed to, we discussed it, our last meeting with Baker Tilly was here, that we had to find a gap of seven, just over $7.73, I believe it is, that we were gonna have to go out to the private capital market to get those bonds. We don't have to do that now. Hence, yes, we can walk through the SRF under 2%. So that's why we, and I like to thank both Baker Tilly and Dickerson Wright, who's next, for getting us updated numbers for their services so we can keep this moving. The final comment that Eagle makes here is, please confirm if you want to, if you want the additional traditional funding amounts.
Did you reply at 3:00?
Thanks, no.
So they, we would like, you know, keeping this moving. They are trying to move this as quickly as possible because they're under the gun too to spend these monies. So again, I'd like to say thanks to Baker Tilly for getting this over to us as quickly as they did, because this was at 3:00, and we had this before 5:00, so.
Very good news.
Well, that's huge, huge savings. Huge savings for us, so. Great, very good news.
Yay.
Anybody have questions or comments?
Just yay.
Take it on.
Just yay.
So all those in favor will be yes, please?
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Worried about some smart aleck, yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number three. We are to consider a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Dickinson Wright PLLC in the amount of, see now, it was $22,500, now $40,000. Right?
Right.
For bond council services related to the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water supply system. This is in conjunction with the DWSRF loan as a junior lien revenue bond through the state of Michigan's drinking water revolving fund program, also to authorize the city manager to execute the related agreement. Your pleasure thereof.
Move to adopt.
Motion's support. More color here?
Again, this is the bond side of it as opposed to the financing side. And what's good about this, if you probably realize that before, we had two different agreements that we were gonna have with Dickerson Wright. That was gonna be $53,000 because they had to be separated, different funding programs. Since it's all into one now, and there was actually an increase, we're in at $40,000. That's at a $53,000 for that, so.
Saving money already.
Saving money, yeah, yes. But again, I could thank Dickerson Wright for getting this over to us as quickly as they did because, like I said, it was trying to get this done and then keep everything moving with the Eagle.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Go forth, young man.
We will.
Item number four has been removed, so we'll move on to F, recommendation on bids. We are to consider a resolution to receive a bid for maintenance, garage column repairs, and wastewater treatment plant pump host beam upgrades.
Easy for you to say.
It is not. And we're to award the repair contract to the sole bidder and also to approve the related request for purchase in the amount of $79,987 and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the related agreement. The following bid was received, I guess, in two parts, both from Oak Construction of Schwartz Creek, Michigan. One for column repairs of $17,900 and hoist beam upgrades for $62,087. Your pleasure thereof.
Move to approve.
Support. Motion's support.
Yes, all right. Column repairs. There's two structural columns that are in the PW garage on Washington Avenue that, it's steel, and they're rusted. And those beams support the roof system, so those beams have to be repaired, you know, so we can keep using the building. So that's the first one. The second one, the hoist beam upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. This is used to lift and service the influent pumps, and those influent pumps will need to do maintenance on them, about two tons in weight, so it's a, it's quite a big across there to do that lift, so. Both of those are in need of maintenance and repair, so.
So these were in the garage. It wasn't damaged?
No.
We had some that were damaged a couple of years ago, didn't we? The truck ran into them or something?
I don't recall that, to be honest with you, but these are, they're just naturally rotting off just from rust. These two are. It's near where the wash bay is at, so there's two of them that are rusted because of that.
Okay. Is there protective coating or something?
The new ones will.
That we can do, okay.
Yeah, coating.
And the rest of them?
They're not within the vicinity, so they don't, they don't have any issues.
And they don't need this coating either? Okay.
No, but the two lower ones that get replaced will have it on there.
Good, good idea. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, moving down to number two. Consideration of a resolution to receive bids for sewer inspection services for the upcoming sanitary sewer system improvements and award the project contract to the recommended bidder. Also, we are to approve your corresponding request for purchase and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the related agreement. There was a bunch of bids received on November 8, 2023, ranging, looks like, from $10,562,500 all the way up to $31,400. I don't know what changed in that scope of work, but there's quite a range there. It's all the same scope of work, right?
It's all the same scope of work, yes. We were, we were very.
Big variety.
Yes, and they've checked in on it and made sure the company is, you know, can do the work.
So the low bidder, Plumbers Environmental Services from Byron Center, Michigan, has been checked out, I guess, to our satisfaction. We haven't used them before, have we?
No.
So it'd be a new contractor for the city?
The.
The references are good.
Yep, the most recent one we, was the second lowest bidder. We just did it with some downtown parking lots. So they were really close, so.
Okay. The recommended bidder is Plumbers Environmental Services, which is the lowest bid, so your pleasure.
Move to accept the lowest bid.
Motion's support. Any more color? Your questions from anyone?
Just, like, these are to look at neighborhood street projects coming up, which is tied to the SRF funding and the Pine Avenue reconstruction project. That's what these will be televising.
Okay. Hearing nothing further. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we have another contract. Resolutions. First up, we have consideration of a resolution to approve a budget amendment related to change orders for the downtown parking lot improvements project. Your pleasure.
Move to adapt.
Support. Motion's support.
Yep, these are change orders that we've already approved. We're just moving money to increase of $119,500 to increase the intergovernmental revenue budget by that amount, and to increase the parking lot expenditure budget by that amount. And that is being paid for out of our fund balance of our ARPA monies. So it's nothing coming from our general fund. We're just moving it into the revenue, then out the expenditure.
Okay. Additional questions? Have we talked it to death?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we've changed our budget then. By the ordinance, we are to consider a resolution to introduce ordinance number 841, which is an ordinance addressing floodplain management provisions of the state construction code. Your pleasure to introduce this ordinance.
So moved.
Support.
Motion's support.
Yep, we met with Eagle, a different division of Eagle, to talk about our floodplain and the floodplain insurance program. Part of those requirements is you must have an updated ordinance and interlocal agreement, which is the next thing on our list here, with who's your billing official. And our billing official is contracted through Gresham County, so we need to make those adjustments in our ordinance, so we have a new ordinance that's in front of you that's basically stating that we're giving the authority of the enforcement of the floodplain to the billing official of Gresham County. And then that's, you know, also within the next agenda item with the interlocal agreement. But this has to happen if we can want to continue to have the floodplain insurance program available to our citizens.
And we definitely want it back.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Yes.
Because you can't get mortgages without it.
We got to pull by the horns on that one.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, so agreements. Consider a resolution to adopt the intergovernmental agreement to manage floodplain development for the national flood insurance program, and also to authorize the city manager and clerk to, city clerk, to sign the agreement on behalf of the city of Alma.
Move to adopt.
Support. Motion's support.
Same thing as before. The only thing I would add is that the wording and the language that's in that agreement comes straight from Eagle.
Good, we didn't have to pay a lawyer for it.
We didn't have to pay a lawyer for it, no.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, we'll move down to number two. Consideration of a resolution to rescind July 11, 2023, resolution number 2023-0187, and approve a professional service agreement with Fishbeck for security upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant in the amount of $21,213, and also to approve the corresponding request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the related agreement for services.
Move to adapt.
Support. Hey, motion's support. Background.
Just as it says there, we're rescinding the July 11 approval because it did not include all the costs for both the water and wastewater. The total cost between both those facilities will be $42,426, but half is handled by GAWA, which is the water side of things. So like it said in the motion, the $21,213 will be our responsibility for the wastewater treatment plant.
Questions? Just curious on the operations, because GAWA is still relatively new to us. They assume we have to approve this also before it comes into effect?
Yes, we meet, we're hoping to meet next Tuesday. We've been trying to get that board together to take care of this one. This is an item we gotta take care of, so.
Okay. Cool. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We have another project going. Number three. Consideration of a resolution to ratify an easement agreement with Consumers Energy, which was an emergency requirement for movement of utilities as part of the Washington Avenue sanitary sewer reconstruction project and was signed on November 1, 2023. Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion's support.
As we started, well, not started the project, as everyone went through with the project, they found out that the sewer line or the sanitary line that was there was underneath utility poles and some underground utilities that were there. Those had to be moved before consumers would come in and do that work. We had to give them a place to move them, so. That's what that easement was for, was to move those public utilities around on our property there so they could keep working. At this point, the contractor is done. As of last week, they completed the work for this this year, but that did allow them to continue to keep moving. That's why we did do it as an emergency to keep the project moving, so. We don't know how sometimes weather isn't down here or in Michigan, so we could have been frozen and and we might not have got as far as we did, so.
That's true.
Yep, we did have our extra week in between our commission meetings, so that's why we went this route, so.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving down to reports of officers, boards, and committees. The commissioner may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any items, any of the items within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Alma District Fire Board, October 25, 2023, draft meeting minutes. The Downtown Development Authority, October 25, 2023, draft meeting minutes. The Planning Commission, November 6, 2023, draft meeting minutes. The Alma Police Department, October 2023, report. The Alma Transit, October 2023, ridership report. A building permits report for October 2023. And Alma Fire District, third quarter 2023, report. The Finance Department, October 2023, report. And last but not least, the City Manager's Newsletter.
Move to receive 1 through 8.
Support.
Motion's support. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Would there be any interest in number 9?
Would there be a seat for City Manager?
Sure.
Support. All right, we have a motion, support. City Manager's Newsletter. Can I tell us what was in that?
That's right. All right, well, just for the public also.
Yes. So I'm sure we're part of it.
The, that's what happens when you have an extra week in between all these reports. When we're putting it together, it's like, wow, that's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Yeah, an extra week, so that's why there's so many of them. First up, item we're gonna talk about tonight is the downtown tree proposal. We did meet here a couple of weeks ago with the DDA to review the proposal. And we did include a Google map that has different layers you can click on and off to kind of get a feel for how that process would work over the three years that we're proposing. Within that plan, the 62 trees would ultimately be removed over that three-year period and replaced by 40 trees and three different types of species. The three species that we have is, we're gonna do some of the honey locusts that we currently have downtown. We're gonna include some European hornbeam and the Queen Elizabeth maple. The honey locust would go on the corners, intersections, and then the fill-ins would be the other two species, maple and the hornbeam. The DDA board was pleased and good with the proposal that was presented. And so that's why it's up here. Just wanted to make sure you guys had a chance to review it, and if the commission is good with it, we'll have it on the next agenda for approval. We will make this available here between this and our next meeting on the website, so people can go on there and take a look at that. If we do move forward with that project, we may be able to do some of the trees here, maybe in February, start then, taking them down just to get a little head start on it, as long as we don't get lost, though. I mean, if we're pushing snow, then things change, but we can get started then. So from there, is there any questions that any of the commissioners have on the proposal?
Just would like to comment that staff did a great job.
I like to say Jim Goodall, who helped out tremendously, and it was his idea to use his Google map technology to to turn it on and off, and it made so much easier to talk to DDA and for folks to understand what's gonna happen.
Process worked really well, so thank you for that. Thank you, Jim, for that.
Definitely. I have multiple times too, honestly. I do appreciate his help. I told you we're gonna be back to Pine Avenue Reconstruction Project. With all the great news we've had from the SRF and the ARPA monies coming in for our water project, this has put a little bit of a damper on scheduling with our Pine River funding for the surface through the State, the Surface Transportation Program funding. And that is, every six years, we receive this $385,000 for a street surface within the community. It used to be every three years, now it's every six, so whatever happened to that, but that's what happened. And that is shared between us, St. Louis, and Gresham County.
Didn't the state grab a bunch of that?
It could have. They didn't really explain why they were doing it. They just, you know.
It just never came.
So that's what we're stuck with. But with the timing of when we can put this particular project out for bid would not be until September. What we have to do with SRF, next September, what we can do, what I have to do with SRF and that project, it has to be out and bids in by July, so obviously that doesn't work for 2024. So Dave and his crew were going back and forth with MDOT and the engineers on what other options we may have. They kicked out a couple that weren't so appealing, but I think now that we do have a way forward, and that way forward is there's another community in the state of Michigan that is in the FY24 slate of projects instead of the 25, which we are in, and they're willing to swap that, so we would be able to swap dollars for that within an agreement. And that would put us to be able to put this project out for the surface portion of it out for bid, at the same time we're putting out the water and sanitary project. Obviously, I need to bring this back to you with an agreement for this board's approval, but we just wanted to put that out in front of you. I know it was a long explanation in the newsletter, but that's the long and short of it. Making sure that that's okay with everybody, that we swap with the community. The other options were that if the state actually could buy out our The other options were that if the state actually could buy out our dollar amount at a 10% loss to us, that was one of the other options, to get the project moved into the 2024 budget or bidding year. But they were not going to bet on this. All the other stuff that they've worked really well with us on, like I said, getting this extra money from them reaching out and saying, hey, we got some extra money for you, but this, they were just not going to bet on the scheduling for this. So if everyone's good, we'll have that.
Sounds like a plan. And if the other entity is willing to do it also, if they can't get it done this year or whatever.
It's a win-win.
It's a win-win.
Absolutely.
Look what happened on the thing we just did with the state money and, you know, moving stuff around and.
It's good. It was, well, that was a.
It's good to be flexible.
At first, I didn't think they were, it was a couple days, three days. They were just, nope, this is what's going to happen. And it's nice to see that they at least were be accommodating enough to, there was another community out there that they, you know, said, hey, this could happen, and we can work with it this way. So, you know, keep all these projects moving forward, so. On the timetable we talked about, so that's important. The Pine River Mill Pond, impoundment, whatever you want to call it, sometimes everybody calls a little bit of everything, and the dam. Been back in some communications with the Healthy Pine River Group. I did provide, Chuck Sandro sent this over to me yesterday, that a Eagle grant opportunity has come up. It's called the Dam Risk Reduction Grant Program. Some of this funding looks like to be a one-time offer, and it does provide some funding for some feasibility and pre-engineering. As Chuck outlined here in his memo to us, this would look at, you know, looking at the health of the river, the impoundment itself, underneath the waters, the dam, and then look at viable options that could be moving forward. Some community outreach, talking with folks about, you know, what are their feelings about the dam and the health of the river. So basically, just from start to finish of what's there, what could be done. And all that being covered by the state of Michigan underneath this grant. If you look down to the very bottom of it, it talks about projected costs of $334,000. And there is a match, required match of 10% in there. And Chuck has put a number of $103,000 in there, which is 30%, but that matching dollar amount is not cash dollar amounts. Those are in-kind dollar amounts from like, say, us, the city of Alma, the Gresham County watershed, Alma College, anybody that's great at Gresham development, the Chamber, anybody that puts some effort into helping put this together, we can use those times and efforts toward the match. So before we proceeded further to send, you know, prepare and send in the notice of intent to apply, we wanted to get some feedback and to, we'll first inform this board and then get feedback if it's okay to go ahead and submit that NOI and see if we are accepted to go ahead and apply for it. Dave and I did have a video conference with Eagle about this program. Gave them a long history of the riverfront, where it was, how we got to this point, our goals for what that thing, the river could look like in the future, what we could use it for. And it was, I thought it was a very positive interaction of, you know, what they even thought, what we could do there in the future also. This would be talking with Chuck Sandro today. This, if we could get this funding to do this study, this would be our jumping off point to work with the state of what we do going forward with the actual, the river and the dam itself, as opposed to just the study.
I think the more input that we can get on this from citizens and everybody else, this is, this could be a major project to do whatever we're going to do with the river and the dam and the mill pond and all that that would affect everything and everybody in the city of Alma. And I think the more input we can get before you take any action on it is definitely good.
Well, the timing is good because we do have dam, I shouldn't say it that way because it sounds too funny. There's issues with the dam that need attention.
Need dollars.
Yeah, they need dollars.
They need dollars.
So when you read through the requirements of this, what they're obviously trying to do within the name is lower the risk of failures of these dams. So we, us, going to them and saying, hey, we need a couple repairs, that's not something they're really going to look at funding. They're, if it was a major reconstruction of the dam, they might look at that, but that's, I don't know if they'd even fund us on that because they'd want us to look at the other issues that are happening in the impoundment. So we think we got a good shot with that. Like I said, it's been a while since I've had like a meeting with any government official where I leave the call. I'm actually encouraged and like, wow, okay, we just got to provide this, this, and this, and we have a good shot at doing this, so. Anyway, just want to provide that and get your thoughts.
Sounds good.
Thoughts? Yeah, I agree. I mean, I've had the opportunity to talk with Chuck at length about this and, you know, Pine River, I've talked about in the past, I remember a full number of that, so dues payment, at least, it's $5 a year, so. Probably encourage everybody to join it.
I think I am.
Best bargain in town. But yeah, I think, you know, as the quality of that river, the mill pond in particular keeps deteriorating year after year after year, opportunity is, you know, knocking here for us to give us the opportunity to do something transformative there, I think.
The thing is, it really could be an asset. It really, really could be a beautiful river, a thing that we had planned for the South State Street, you know, whole thing in there, the vision that we had for that, still could happen sometime. That could be a real asset for this community, is a really beautiful.
And it should be.
It should be, yeah. Yeah, 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 it should be.
My grandpa used to swim there after working at the N.P. store.
Yeah.
In the 50s.
So, I think we're good to go forward again. I don't hear any negative comments, so.
We're not.
Our thanks to Chuck.
Oh, yes, yes. He's done, he's already done one of these before, he said, so.
He's done lots of them.
Yes, so he's got a lot of the work already done, he said, so looking forward to working with him on it. Next item, disabled veterans exemption changes. The city assessor, Kathy Rosen, has provided you a memo. I won't go through those things because she was very detailed about it. But the takeaway from it, she provided a revenue loss spreadsheet from when the exemption went into effect in 2014 through our just most recent tax year of 2023. For all our different, you know, for the city, operating, library, street, transit, the loss within that exemption is a total of $137,807. That will probably rise over the next few years because of the expansion of the changes in the exemption. The exemption is a good idea. It's an earned benefit for the veterans. The only thing that I'm hoping the legislature or even the federal government will take a look at is some kind of a reimbursement to the locals for this because this is directly taking our dollars away. And not saying we wouldn't do this, but it's not our decision on how much or what happens with it. They have, in the past, just recently with the personal property taxes, they've taken some of those taxes away, but they have instituted a formula for some reimbursement. It wasn't that as much as it used to be, but there is still some.
It's going away.
Yeah, reimbursement coming back. So there's a way for them to work through that. But we just wanted to make the commission aware of the changes and the impacts that we've seen recently. And then also that it's required to have a process and procedure for granting, denying, and auditing, and we do have that, so we provided that there for everyone's review. Countywide master planning, as we talk about the river, that should be a big part of our, you know, master plan. The first public input is on Wednesday, January 17, 2024, 5:30, 7:30, at the Gresham RSD in Inthaca. So if you head down or need a ride, let me know and ride down together. And just fun notes, of course, we're not too far out now for, come home to Alma for the holidays, Friday, December 8, 5:30, 8:30 downtown. And then the next morning is the Alma Jingle Bell Run, Walk, and Kids Reindeer Trot, December 9, at 10 a.m. And one last thing, I get everyone's input on, believe it or not, so we're talking about goals and budget for next year already. We have a couple of thoughts, so it's kind of similar to last year. We kicked out two Tuesdays that are off Tuesdays from our commission meeting for an initial goal-setting meeting, and sooner we can pick that, that way we can nail down the library-built room. Because believe it or not, sometimes when I need something, or I said, oh, the room's already been booked. So the two dates we're looking at is either January 30 of 2024 at 6 p.m. or Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at 6 p.m. Is there either one of those dates that would be more?
Those both work for me.
Tuesdays, 30, 31, 32.
January 30th or February 6th.
6th, yes.
They're far enough in advance that I can work something out.
That's what we thought we would.
Let's go January 30th, and if it's a snowstorm, we'll go the 6th.
Take the 30th if you can.
Okay.
It's all the same, but.
Okay, let's do that.
Either work.
All right, 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock, you said?
6 o'clock.
Right here.
Perfect. We'll be at the library, because it's a public meeting in case we do have folks show up, we have room for everybody to sit. But that's all I have for this evening.
Very good.
Sorry to get this in here.
Nope.
We're all like, put it in the calendar.
Yeah, I appreciate that. If you don't know what to do now, you know something's going to get scheduled. Right over the top of it. Thank you, Eric. Last chance for any questions for, submit. Hearing none, all those in favor of receiving his newsletter, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried and we receive the newsletter. There's no new business appropriations. Anyone in favor of paying the bills tonight?
Sure, let's do that.
Motion support. Anybody have any questions about the aforementioned bills? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The bills are being paid. Commissioner comments? Lori, would you like to start out tonight?
Glad to be back.
Okay, well, welcome back. We're glad you're back.
I wish it were warmer, but.
It was beautiful today, so.
Yeah, actually, yes. It's been pretty, the last couple days.
It's a great November day in Alma.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Congratulations to all the sports teams at Alma High School that made it as far as they did this year, and of course Alma College, their football team, and we're hosting a lot of people coming in town on Saturday. And condolences for my favorite teacher, Mr. Tobin. He passed away this week, Mike Tobin. He's a teacher in Alma for many years.
Okay.
Just a plug for Cabaret, it starts tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, I'm going Saturday.
Yeah, so.
Plug and support. Just like the rehearsal, you know, well. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Roxanne?
Thank you.
Okay. Roger, you're back in town too.
I'm back in town, thank you, yeah. Wonderful, wonderful vacation.
The wonders have returned.
The wonders have returned, one from the north and one from the south. We had both sides of the United States covered, Mexico and one from Canada, so. The annual Thanksgiving Community Dinner next Thursday night, First Presbyterian Church, noon. Ramping up, I got a whole bunch of stuff in today in the way of supplies. Things are pretty well falling in place.
What year is this for you, Roger?
I think this is the 31st. And the reason I think that is I came across a newspaper article from last year that said it was our 30th.
So you have documentary proof.
But I gave them that number last year.
A lot of them, maybe.
Anyhow, looking for, looking for a good time. A lot of work, but a lot of fun, so.
Thank you for the work. We sure appreciate it. Is there anything? Nothing?
Nice to have an election night off, though, isn't it?
And I confirmed with her earlier, she hasn't got any envelopes. You're doing a great job, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Eric, just, yeah, so we, the college is hosting an NCAA playoff game here, second time in a row. It's exciting to have, we're going to have a lot, it's going to be at PAX Stadium again, so it's great to have that many visitors coming in, maybe even for the first time ever seeing or knowing that there is an Alma Michigan. So I'm excited to host them again, so I'm looking forward, I'm working the sidelines, so excited.
And it's not going to be 25 below zero.
It's not going to be 25.
Oh, no, not this time.
That's your horrible.
This Saturday, yeah.
Saturday, I need to be there.
Be there, that's right. And you can watch it, you can watch it online, too.
Yeah.
They are streaming it.
And they're a heck of a team, yes, Eric.
Bye.
Anything else?
That's it.
I just want to give thanks, Dave, your crew, and everybody that's hanging Christmas decorations out there, I see they're up. And shout out to Alma Action, I think it was mostly Jeff and Cindy, maybe?
Cindy Austin.
Did all the revamping of the reeds, I think for the either the third, fourth, or fifth time, I think those things have been rebuilt. But they seem to be holding up well, they look terrific. I think they look better now than they did when they were new, so those guys did a really good job. Thanks to the crew that's hanging everything and plugging it all in, we appreciate that. Things are going forward, a lot of good news. I mean, this, we had the, our last meeting, we got that $9 million grant, which was terrific news after our last meeting. This time, I mean, this is, the savings in interest has to be at least over $1 million. I don't know if you're running, you have probably got a chance to run any numbers on it, but it's got to be a million bucks or more over the course of that thing, so. It's going to save our taxpayers, our ratepayers, a lot of money, even though the rates are still going up. We're not going, we can't go back on that, but it's, you know, it's still only a fraction of the work these things done, so. With that, I'd like to open up to the public, if anybody would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, you have up to five minutes to share your thoughts with the commission.
Well, it won't take me five minutes. Kate Bowens, if you hadn't heard, the chairman of the board commissioner has resigned. And you see in the paper yesterday that we had four very qualified people, but today we selected the under-chair, Steve Sopsey. And he will resign from the sheriff's department on Tuesday when he's sworn in. And Jan Bunning will cheer the meetings until we get a full board, and then we'll probably have a new chairman. It's unlikely, but the short handsome farmer from Seville Township could possibly be, but it's unlikely.
Never say no.
Never say no, there you go.[1772.73]